To Bellingham Municipal Code, Section 10.24.120, Public Noise Disturbance. On October 16th, the City Council directed staff to return with suggested revisions to that section of the code. These revisions include establishing that construction and industrial noises between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM are prohibited to emanate from any type of zoning if received in a residential zone to a level constituting a public noise disturbance. Formerly, the noises were prohibited, but the whole issue of sending and receiving wasn't specified in the law. In addition, council requested suggested revisions, increasing the penalties for such disturbance. Shall we turn to Assistant City Attorney Amy Cram?
Start. Good afternoon, Amy Cram, Legal Department. I have just passed out a potential new version of the language that was in the staff memo and in the agenda, and the new part of it was requested by Public Works just very recently to make sure that they could continue with their work that they typically do at night and work that is ongoing through pump stations and other facilities. So I wanted to let council know that that has additionally been suggested. As you know, today, we're just looking for direction, not asking you to vote on any ordinance language, and we can bring that forward, but I wanted to include that as part of the language to be considered today. You'll also see that I've included some emergency language also in this area. So this is the language that reflects what council had asked to be brought back, the ideas that council had, and also you had asked about specifically raising the penalties. And you'll see in your staff memo that there's a little bit of an issue with that because raising beyond $1,000 turns the misdemeanor into a gross misdemeanor, so I want to let you know that, and maybe you can have some discussion about that and whatever other discussion you would like to have about it. I'd also just like to remind council that although this issue came up really because of complaints about ABC recycling, it obviously would become a citywide ordinance that would affect industry or really, well, this section is industrial noises in construction, so it would affect that all over the city. And as you may or may not be aware, there are a number of industrial facilities that do work all night, and possibly, I haven't checked with the police department on this, and I don't know, at least you would know off the top of your head, but there probably have been some complaints over the years about other industries that operate at night. And so just keep in mind that we'd be affecting industries other than the one that has had the most recent complaints. The other thing that I just wanted to bring to your attention, which we briefly discussed last time, was that the officers that would be enforcing this would be police officers unless you decided to dedicate some other resources for nighttime, because this has to do with nighttime, and the folks that are out at night are typically police officers enforcing this. And so in addition to answering that question about who would be enforcing, I wanted to remind you that the police officer is going to be the person who's out there listening to make that determination about whether this is a public noise disturbance, since you had determined not to go down the decibel route. It's still in this nuisance realm of public disturbance. And so it may be, I'm sure it would be quite helpful for the police officer to be able to have some direction about some of these noise issues. So those are the things I wanted to bring to your attention, and happy to answer any questions that I can. We also have the police chief here, and I'm not sure if Public Works is here, but we have planning director. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Cram. To first start off, could you, one misconception I heard is that we're prohibiting all noise at night. Could you please describe the unreasonable disturb or interfere with peace, comfort, repose part of the code, how that has been or would be applied by enforcement officers?
Yes, so in the past, you may recall that our language, or actually currently, our language has been interpreted as noise that emanates from something that's non-residential would not be considered a public noise disturbance if it came from, for example, an industrial or commercial area and was received into a residential. What council was looking at was, well, we don't, we're not going to differentiate amongst the different zones where the noise is emanating, so any noise emanating from anywhere that is then received in a residential zone would be changed by this potential ordinance, or at least clarified at a minimum. So the noise that this section applies to is construction and industrial noise. Our other sections of the code are about music, there's an entertainment district section, and so this is particularly construction and industrial noises. Does that answer it?
I think it does. It's just that when we talked years ago about construction, there was this idea that we wouldn't allow people to start work building a house until 7:00 AM, but I think the way it's read is go ahead and start staging, unloading, whatever you need to do, but the loud stuff, the dumping or the hammering, that that's what would be regulated outside the hours. Similarly, if there's industrial activity that's not so loud, it wouldn't fall under the regulations. It's not about all noise, it's about, it's about the standard of unreasonable noise that disturbs people.
Yes, and as again, because we don't have a particular decibel noise or a very specific description of a level of noise, whether it's decibel or otherwise, it is more of a nuisance based what is disturbing the public. There is case law in Washington that gives you some parameters, and it is, I think, what most of you or the public would view as something that is very disturbing. So.
Thank you. Other council members? Dan, and then Lisa.
Yep, thanks, Ms. Cram. I'm trying to get a handle on the legal animating difference between gross misdemeanor and misdemeanor offense here, and where a gross misdemeanor would be, where would those charges be, or those complaints be held? Would that be in muni court, or would that be in superior court? And like, what is the difference, and why is there that concern?
Alan Mariner, City Attorney, the gross misdemeanors would also be heard in muni court. It's just, I think it's up to 364 days in jail, and is it $5,000? It's either $5,000 or $10,000.
It's, yeah, I think it's five.
More jail time, higher penalties, up to higher penalties, but it's still, it's not a felony, it would occur in municipal court.
And the other aspect that you'll notice that I put in the memo, I left those blank, I think council member Anderson had asked for increased, to keep up with the times, increased monetary penalties. You had not, to date, as I recall, discussed any kind of increased jail time. We were talking about penalties, and one of the things that is important to note that is if it's over $1,000, you're in that gross misdemeanor category, which does include, just so you know, I believe DUIs, some kinds of domestic violence and other assaults. So it brings it into that category of really a higher level of crime, but still in our muni court.
Lisa?
Thank you. So just a comment and then a question. When it comes to the noise, and especially since somebody would be responding, that occasional one-off, you know, like a boat, you know, being unloaded, or, you know, a truck horn, something, by the time the officer would respond, that noise would be gone, and so the likelihood of being able to enforce or fine is very slight. So I know some people were concerned about industries in the community being impacted, but really, this is about that ongoing noise that is consistent or frequent enough that someone responding would be able to hear it into the wee hours of the morning. So I'm not really worried too much about some of that occasional industrial noise that might happen, because it might happen for five minutes and then be done, and that could be a little bit annoying, but people can go back to sleep. My area of concern is those operational hours that is pretty consistent, and the noise does not dissipate or go away, and I think that's what we're trying to address. As far as fines, I was one that asked for us to look at that, because I don't want a fine structure that a large business could just decide that it's the cost of doing business. If they get fined $1,000 a day for 10 days, that might be worth to violate a noise ordinance because it's cheaper than not working. So I would be interested in looking at the fine structure going up to the 5,000, but have it be a situation that if the noise, you know, a situation that, you know, after the third fine, in 10 days, it can then be escalated to a higher fine. I imagine the first, you know, if people are complying and they know that it's a disruption, not interested, I'd be more interested in a warning system, you know, the first time, as long as they're not, like, having been warned before, just so that it's information and educational, that this noise is, you know, disrupting, give the company the ability to address it. But if it's ongoing, then we need to have a point of escalation. I can't imagine, unless it's flagrant, that they're consistently racking up $5,000 fines, that a judge is going to put any owner of a business in jail. But if we're dealing eight months down the line, and they're getting $5,000 fines consistently, and education and outreach hasn't worked, and they're kind of approaching it as a cost of doing business, then I think we look at other measures, and that is up to the city, what they want to pursue, and then also the judge. So I'm not necessarily off the table on the ability for jail, but I think that's the last resort after everything else has been pursued. So that's where my interests are at.
So in following that line of questioning and that line of reason, let's not delude ourselves, no one's going to jail for a noise violation, if it's a misdemeanor or a gross misdemeanor. The jail is full, it accepts only felons at this point, and dangerous ones. So I think that the fine structure needs to be refined in such a way that it encourages people not to violate this ordinance, and to make sure that they are, that the owners, the operators are complying with the law. So that's one piece. And then the other pieces are, we have essential utilities that are here in Bellingham, including our wastewater treatment facility, which is a city facility, but we also have private utilities like the Nkinjin Plant located on Cornwall, which emanates a kind of a low, low-grade kind of buzzy noise, and you can see the steam coming out of it. That's typically activated during the winter months when the power grid has challenges. So I want to make sure that we are, that we're taking under consideration those essential utilities when we, when we're talking about this as a legal structure. Thanks.
Further discussion? Anna?
So one of the questions I have is related to, I guess, the different noise ordinances that we have in place, because you made reference to the fact that the entertainment, right, entertainment district or that particular area is treated differently. But I believe it was in Sunnyland, right, where it was listed that that's industrial, but, or is that, I'm wondering what the zoning in that area is, because I know that there was, you know, significant response from the community.
I'm pretty sure it's mixed, commercial, residential, but I unfortunately don't have my computer sitting here.
Okay. Because part of it, too, is looking for some consistency in how we, right, treat residential areas throughout the city, and so wanting to, yeah, I guess, I'd be curious to see the different ordinances and how we treat noise throughout the city, emanating from different areas, and the entertainment district and others, just thinking about when we have that rub with residential areas, right, how that's addressed, because wanting to be clear about policy that's consistent across, across the board and concerned, I mean, there's a lot of discretion here when you're talking about, is it reasonable or not, and is it creating this disturbance, and what is annoying or bothersome to one person versus another, right? My daughter's a drummer, and so, you know, we have a drum set in the shop, and fortunately we back up on an, you know, on the Meridian, and so it's not bothering anybody, but at the same time, just that discretion is of concern to me, and wanting to make sure also, and having an idea about what industries, we're saying we can't speak to it necessarily now, obviously, this has been brought forward primarily surrounding ABC work down at the port, but wanting to know what other industries, right, in our city would be impacted by such a change, and what response there's been from the community as far as complaints.
Ollie?
Councilmember Stone touched on one of my questions, and I don't even know if it's possible to get an answer to this, but I think thinking about who else would be, we'd be, what other businesses would potentially be affecting with this change, other than the one that's, the subject of initiating the change? Is it possible to gather information about other complaints that have happened regarding similar noises, a construction industrial that would fall within the scope of this? Do we have that information that could be gathered?
I believe it is possible to gather the information about the complaints. I, yeah, I think it is possible to do that. I also think it is possible to know, I know that it's possible to know, what are industrial, other industrially zoned areas are, and there are not very many of them. I don't know if planning director wants to speak to that.
Good afternoon, Blake Lyon, Director of Planning and Community Development. Just in response to councilmember Stone's comment, the industrial area in Sunnyland is, is an industrial area, it does border up to a residential multifamily, so there are areas where, for example, along Grant Street in Carolina, where you'll have, you know, kind of a certain block that will extend up into the residential area, so it does not have a clean line, it kind of undulates a little bit through those particular communities where you might have industrial on one side of the street, residential on the other side of the street, and so that certainly can present some challenges. The other comment I'll make in response to councilmember Huffman is, it's important to note that many of the both commercial businesses and industrial businesses are also regulated by OSHA standards, occupational safety standards, and so you'll have things like, oftentimes what you see is backup sensors on vehicles, and so you might have other safety auto warnings or light warnings that come on for safety purposes in those various different industries, and those are requirements of those businesses to be able to operate that, and so that can be, we heard a little bit of that conversation where they convert truck backup beats that you might normally hear to what they call a squawk box, which changes the pitch and the tone, but it still is intended to provide that safety element to it. So those are some things that we also want to make sure we're paying attention to.
This might be a good time to invite our colleague at the port, Port Director Rob Fixx up, to just offer thoughts that might be responsive to councilmember Huffman, and also provide his views on, on the proposals before you today. So, Mr. Fixx, feel free to have a seat at the table.
A question. I kind of, I appreciate the fact being here, but we haven't opened up for other interest areas to speak to this. I just caution that it's not a public hearing yet, so to talk about the impacts on the port versus having the opportunity for people to speak about the impacts of the neighborhood, I feel is a little bit unfair, just to share my thoughts.
Recognizing Mayor Fleetwood as the representative of the administration, and I think we are here to hear from the administration, I think we would accept, of course, the mayor bringing up his department heads or other staff members. In this case, he's elected to bring up someone who's not one of his staff, but I'm still viewing this as administrative input to us. But the point is well taken, we're not here to accept testimony from the public.
Thank you, councilmembers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for inviting me up here. I'll try to be brief. I will say that the new language alleviates one of my concerns, and that was the ability to do projects at night. The port does a lot of dredging or pile driving at night, and it's important that that be allowed to continue. Typically, that's 24-hour type operations. Another point I wanted to talk to was the unintended consequences of this noise ordinance. It's not just going to affect ABC, it's going to affect a number of businesses. It will affect other businesses at the Bellingham Shipping Terminal. Every time we ship a cargo out in my history at the port, which I'm going on 16 years, we have noise complaints, whether that was logs, whether that was grain, we are anticipating cars at some point in the future, we will get noise complaints on that. Those complaints will emanate from the lights going on there, and it will emanate from backup alarms, and just the general traffic going on in the terminal. Other port businesses that will be affected, that we know for sure are going to be affected, All American Marine, they paint at night, and when they paint, they run their exhaust fans, and they have received people complaining about the noise of those exhaust fans. They will no longer be allowed to paint at night, and so it affects their ability to operate. Bellingham Cold Storage, a very similar port business on port property that will be affected in its ability to unload ships at night. You have to understand that when ships come into harbor, they want to be there for a minimum amount of time. They sit at the dock, they unload as quickly as they can, then they leave to go get their next cargo. If they can't unload 24 hours a day, those ships may call someplace else. So it will affect Bellingham Cold Storage. The port's economic development part, well, the county's economic development part and port staff are putting together a list of all the businesses we think will be affected by this. We're going to try in the next couple of weeks to contact those businesses to truly gauge whether they will be affected. Some used to do 24-hour work, some no longer do, so we're going to try and get a more accurate list than what we just have on the top of our heads. But right now, we have a list of 25-plus companies that we believe will be affected negatively by this noise ordinance if it were to pass. The third thing I want to say-
Ms. Cram, can we have you address those concerns? Again, the way I'm reading the standard about unreasonable disturb, backup light seems to be more than reasonable, as you say, it could be, whereas Mr. Lyon said, it's a mandated safety precaution. So can you address how that reasonable standard would apply to what might be typical and usual noises emanating from industrial area?
Yes, but not obviously with exact precision on a case-by-case basis, because again, we're going to have a police officer in the field making that determination, but if we do look at case law, it has been sustained noise, and it's been loud, and I think that there may be some courts that have relied on or will rely on looking at the Washington State decibel law, even if a municipality hasn't adopted it, because it is a standard that others use, and if you look at that and you compare it to a noise that you've heard intermittently, or that is lower than 50 decibels at night, and you multiply it by the amount that it has to be a sustained time, it's a significant amount of noise for some sustained amount of time. So I would agree with you that a backup, backing up a truck, or blowing of a horn that somebody mentioned would not amount to that. I think it would need to be something much greater, and remember that the language is about, the introductory language is about disturbing the repose of the public.
Mr. Fixx, do you have more comments?
I just want to talk to the enforcement of it, which gets to the police officer. I believe that can be very subjective. One police officer may feel that the backup alarm is disturbing someone to the point of issuing a citation, another may not. Amy's view of what's going to disturb someone is going to be very different than my view of what's going to disturb somebody. So it seems to me that the way this is written is very subjective and open to a bit of interpretation on the individual officer's part, and that could be detrimental to our businesses. And then I'll just, I'll finish up by saying that we have, ABC, I shouldn't say we, but ABC and the Longshoremen have recently come to an agreement on reducing the hours of operation, so they will no longer go till 3:00 AM. We have yet to have a ship come in and operate under the new hours. It seems to me we should let that process work out, see if that's effective enough to satisfy the masses, before we start introducing restricted noise ordinances that are going to affect more than just ABC.
Thank you for the comments. So with regard to the concern that using a reasonable standard is subjective, can you give us your lawyerly opinion on the fact that we and other jurisdictions rely upon the subjectiveness and nuisance-based standard? Is it enforceable and reasonable way of going about regulating noise, or is it so subjective that we're foolish to try?
So it is supposed to be a reasonable man, objective standard, and so what would a reasonable person in that situation do? And it sounds, I'm sure that sounds like there's lots of different reasonable people out there that could have different opinions, but again, I think it has to rise to the level of a pretty major disturbance. I, I don't have a summary of the case law for you, but I can say that they were significant amounts of noise that rose to the level of a public disturbance in the cases where that turned out to be a problem for, for the noise makers. There, about half of the jurisdictions in the state, at least half, use this kind of nuisance-based decision-making, and it has not taken down the state in any, in any way. I don't think, I think certain jurisdictions have decided to go the decibel route for a bunch of reasons, but many have not, and they seem to be operating in a way that is productive for them. In addition to the citation, I think there would have to be several other steps before there was any kind of jail time or fine imposed, so we've got prosecutorial discretion, obviously, and then we have any kind of citation sentencing, and of course, we have an appeal period. So.
Ms. Cram, would the city attorney's office feel comfortable providing guidance to our police officers based on case law, so that when they are out in the field and if they are enforcement officers, they will have benefit of some of that, those previous rulings?
Yes, we could, and I would, I think the police chief is here is, again, when something like this happens, the first thing is to say, hey, can you issue a warning? We don't jump right to issuing citations or charging. So we can provide the training. Again, like Ms. Cram says, it would have to be a significant noise, both in volume and duration, but we can certainly provide the training.
Shall we hear from the chief? Please.
Chief of Police, I just want to add also that this is not a misdemeanor presence exception, so again, officers would have to hear the noise when that's occurring, and I would expect them to use a whole lot of discretion in this. This is a very, on the grand scheme of scale of crimes, this would be very low level. So I would expect a lot of warnings, and even referring to the prosecutor's office more often than not versus issuing the citation.
Thank you. Dan?
Following up on that for the police chief, in terms of resources, you know, what we're talking about is from 10 until 7:00, and typically the shift reduces in terms of officers during that time. Do you, what is your opinion on the ability for Bellingham Police to work on enforcement issues in light of this?
Yes, thank you. Our numbers do reduce overnight during low-volume times of the day. We have our highest number of officers during high-call volume times, but there are times when those calls are going to sit on the screen for a very, very long time before an officer is able to respond to that, and I just foresee a lot of frustration from the community when you call that in, and if you have to wait a significant amount of time before someone even gets there, and then the noise is over, and then you're upset. That's just the reality of how that call would typically happen. If there's a busy night, there's times when it's not, but more often than not, they're pretty busy.
Anna?
So along the same lines, two questions, I guess. One is whether the police department and your team is already faced with similar enforcement activities surrounding noise and things that deal with this level of sort of subjective discretion. So that's one. And two, I guess maybe it's beyond just you, Chief, but what other options within the city we would have for enforcement of something that is considered a low level, and as we're looking to re, you know, reassess sort of how the police department in particular is used in enforcement and response, and alternatives to, you know, police response, if something like this could be addressed through different channels.
Yeah, I mean, just on the fly, I'm just imagining a circumstance where somebody's working, and the police are called to deal with the noise of that worker, and then the police come, and they go, hey, you gotta, you gotta cut out your noise, and they're like, well, I'm working, like, what if I don't? You know, and I don't want, I really would like to avoid that encounter if at all possible, because like, who does, again, the enforcement is going to go to the owner of the business that's carrying out the work, not the actual person that's doing the work, right? So this complicates things a little bit in terms of actual enforcement and having a positive impact.
Further discussion? Lisa?
So a couple of things. One, I would certainly hope we're going to keep the C Click Fix online, so that when people have a noise disturbance, we can still log it there, and then we can see how many people are being disrupted, so we know how big a problem it is. But couldn't a responding officer, if they went to a house over in Sunnyland and said, yes, of course, this is too noisy, a reasonable person would say this is unreasonable for the rest and repose of the neighborhood area, and let's say it's at a particular site, and they're not able to contact the owner, because it's after hours, much like a red light camera, where, you know, somebody's speeding, you have the evidence of that, and you issue a ticket, and, you know, not necessarily to the person, but you send it through the mail, through the correspondence, would we have an avenue similar to that, so that an officer would not have to go to a work site and necessarily shut it down on the spot, but the, the company or owner could receive notification of a warning, and that, you know, if this continues, that a ticket could be issued in the future upon future calls? Because again, I think a big part of this is if people know what the expectations are, a lot of people will adhere to it. And then for those who think that they are not, we want to make sure that they're educated. But those who decide that they're going to violate it, then I think those steps to tickets are next. Is there a process that they don't have to show up on site to give the ticket, but they can send it through the mail, much like a red light ticket?
I like the thought process. I'm not aware of anything that does that. I think the complex part of that is when you're talking about noise, if someone was recording it themselves, then the noise volume could be altered, whereas a red light camera has instrumentation that measures that for you. But I'm, I don't, I'm not aware of anything, maybe the Public Works Department has better ideas, I'm not aware of anything that would enforce noise in that manner.
Just following up on that, I'd like to request that perhaps we look into if any other municipality has used a non-in-person delivery of a ticket for an infraction, what are some of the options we might have available? And just also a comment, as far as anybody else doing the work, I assume one of the reasons why we would be looking at the police department is because they're 24/7, and the hours of operation between 10:00 and 7:00 in the morning, we don't have compliance people in Public Works working that shift, and I don't think it would be very cost-effective for hopefully what will be infrequent noise that would have to be addressed.
Well, I heard a request to the administration, so I would turn to the administration, are you happy to pursue that on your own? Would you like a motion up here? This is to explore a possible enforcement mechanism of what I would call like non-simultaneous citations, citations sent to the business the following day, that sort of thing.
Just so we have a sense of the council, I think the motion would be appropriate.
I move to request city staff to look into options on a non-in-person citation delivery for an infraction of the noise ordinance once passed.
Have a motion before, and again, I understand this be the, the witnessing of the violation must be in person, it's a citation, I think, that we're trying to offload, is that we're talking about? The officer doesn't need to cite the worker.
Similar to the way that red light cameras and speed reader cameras work.
Yeah. Okay, without clarifications or further discussion on the motion, this is a request to administration to explore another possible means of enforcement? All those in favor of the request, I think, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, direction is given. Is there any further directions? So this direction to staff in the memo, Ms. Cram outlined four things, how do we feel about the original language as requested, how do we feel about the additional language that was added at staff request, what is your feedback with regard to the fine structure, and are we copacetic with continuing to rely upon police officers for after-hours enforcement? Is there any direction to staff on some of those issues? Go ahead, Lisa.
Just wanted to clarify, and I don't know if I'll have to make a motion to request this, but I'd be interested in seeing a, a fine process from warning for educational purposes to first fine, to escalation up into the $5,000 fine for repeat offenses. What would that look like? And looking over a time period, say a six-month time period for ongoing infractions? I think we could reset after a certain point and not escalate.
So just to clarify, under penalties, there's one and two. One and two is a civil citation, we just give it. Section two, that's for conviction on a gross misdemeanor, we don't just give it, that has to be paid into court, and then found guilty, and then they're fined. has to be paid into court and then found guilty, and then they're fined, is that right? It says upon conviction.
So the misdemeanors are, they're both misdemeanors, and they're characterized in the, you know, they have the same process, is my understanding.
Section two says upon conviction, am I overreading that? It says, "Any person violating this section shall, upon conviction, for a second or subsequent offense." Am I overreading the word conviction? Is it second citation, really?
Um, no, I think it's, it's heard.
It'd be heard unless they pled, pled out.
Okay, so citation would be issued, if, if they didn't plead, they contested, an automatic conviction in a sense follows?
For, number one, the infraction?
I'm trying to figure out number two, because we're talking about, what Lisa was talking about was, I guess, escalating fines for repeated violations within a time period. I'm trying to figure out the section two. The gross misdemeanor, I don't want to go down that, but I want to understand that we already have a second tier.
No, it would need to be proven in court, or the person pleads out, pleads to the-
Okay, so for that second level, that would involve a court proceeding. The first level is a civil citation, which could or could not be contested, but not necessarily. So does staff understand what, the inquiry from Ms. Anderson?
Yes, I understand the inquiry. I don't think I have direction on the fine levels.
Would the administration prefer more explicit direction on this?
We can, we have examples we can work off of.
Okay.
For the particular fine levels.
Yes. As a matter of process, I was prepared to make a motion to have this come back to us again, but this time written out in ordinance format. Do you think that's premature for various requests? Would you be ready to bring it back in ordinance format, or bring it back again more like this memo with decision points?
If these are the only two things that you're giving us additional direction on, we could bring back an ordinance. I didn't know whether, if there's additional direction, it'd be good to hear that now.
Okay, so to get it on the table, I make a motion that we request administration bring forward in ordinance form, using the suggested language for section C4. With regard to the fine structures, I'm just going to throw it out there to double all the fines, and we can debate it later, and to continue to rely upon the police for the after-hours enforcement, as is current practice. Yes. So we have a motion on the table, I'd like to discuss that. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'd also like to bring back, I think Mr. Fixx agreed to work on, I assume council would like to know the other businesses that are going to be impacted by any changes of ordinance, should we bring that back to?
Yeah, we find, so my intent of the motion is to bring it back to us in ordinance form. My intent is not that we pass what comes back as is, but then we would have at least a few of the steps decided, and we debate the merits of the proposal in that new format. That was the intention of my motion. Is there any further discussion on the motion to request they bring forward those requested changes in ordinance format, along with additional information as discussed, and additional possibilities for enforcement as discussed? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Hannah?
So I guess I just want to ask the council where this discussion goes moving forward, because part of my concern and reservation as a council member in thinking about policy is a bit of discomfort around this particular ordinance, right, coming forward in direct response, really, to a single business in our community, and something that obviously has broader implications. And so in asking, you know, Mr. Fixx and others, what industries would be impacted by such a change? But I also think about future industries, right, and work that could come to our corner of the world to be working, and the idea of a working waterfront, and what that looks like, and what the requirements are, and what the implications are for our community, and are we supportive of that or not? And if not, then owning that, and I think that's a whole other conversation, but if we're supportive of a working waterfront, I think we need to be having deeper discussions about what that means and what that, that looks like. Because I have, yeah, concern at this point that, I mean, I'm welcome to support, you know, discussion continuing and bringing something forward, but I think this is a really small drop in a bigger bucket that we are not talking about.
Lisa?
Share my thoughts on this a little bit. I support, and it's not lip service, I think it would be recognized that I've been a pretty big supporter of labor and unions and having a working waterfront. But I also believe past councils, as we go forward in the future, there are blind spots, and we don't predict what could happen. And then when it lands on our plate, we see that this isn't what we intended. I've had hundreds of conversations with individuals about the waterfront, and what they bought into and envisioned in a working waterfront was manufacturing and things in buildings and, you know, supporting our marine trades and green industry jobs and, you know, the future. And I see this as not just about what's happening with the metal pile and the noise that comes into disturbing multiple neighborhoods. This is finding that blind spot and then addressing it for the future, so that the knowledge about what our expectations are for the impact on the community is known. So I don't see this as just addressing one industry, but it's also setting parameters for future development in industries, what the expectation is on the impact on the community itself. So much like environmental concerns. So if we found out that there's runoff of mercury into the water, we're not going to sit idly and say, we're not going to address that, because it might impact other businesses in the future that may want to tear apart thermometers or something, sorry, just trying to think of what has mercury. So, or evidence. So I'm supportive of addressing this, not as just one industry, but as kind of a harbinger of the direction things could go, which is not the future of Bellingham and the impact on our residents, I want to go down that lane. So I see it as something that past councils could not foresee happening, but 20 years ago, when they were addressing the waterfront, if they could look forward and see the impact, I think they would have addressed it at that point and put the parameters on there of what the expectation was. I would love to see this kind of industry happening, but I also think it could go in a building, or there's other things that could have been addressed in order to mitigate some of the impacts. And I hope that's the future that it goes. So some thoughts on mine.
We're here to move on from the noise ordinance.